All righty, we will go ahead and get started. It is five o'clock. I'm going to ask Councilmember Dean to say the invocation.
Our heavenly Father, we come to you today filled with awe and wonder at the wonderful blessings that you've given to each of us and that you've given to this community and to this state and to this nation. Father, we especially pray that you would grant us wisdom today to help make decisions that are appropriate and beneficial to all those that we're privileged to serve. In thy saying, we pray.
All right, item two, we review council agenda. The invocation will be Pastor McCarreras from First Baptist, and then Councilmember Dean will do both pledges.
That, on the next item, Mayor, on the G, that's one I abstained from last time. Do we have to move that out, or can I just approve everything in the consent except for?
If it's off consent, we need to move it out. So we don't have doubt about that.
On item G. Okay. Okay, on their other council actions, we have a public hearing. Then we go under have resolutions for university. And then we will have the item three of the consider approval.
I would like to change this. I would like to, and I don't know if it's part of it, but I approve in wholeheartedly the five million that we're setting aside and utilizing. I think that the ODC's duties are to take care of those funds and not to fund, not to form coalitions.
I agree.
I think their attention needs to be for forming the, for overseeing those.
Those five million dollars that we're moving.
We've got a, or Cindy's got a proposal, have you seen this one?
No.
Yeah, this one says the council expresses approval to set aside up to five million for funding of future expenditure. That wording is the same, but it is the intent, but it takes out the approval of the coalition and puts in its place this wording that it's the intent of the Odessa City Council to continue participation in and encouragement of community-wide discussions involving all interested parties and groups on how such a broad coalition of support for reasonably priced workforce housing can be organized and structured so that efforts can begin as soon as possible, but also continue and endure for the time needed to complete such broad and comprehensive projects to provide ongoing solutions to the current reasonably priced workforce housing shortages.
I think that's fine, but I still think that somehow we need to express that the intent of ODC in its to watch and govern those funds which we have. And, yeah, we're going to move forward, but what we need to do as a city anyway, I mean, that's my feeling. I don't know.
Well, any council member could make a motion saying, I want to make a motion different than the resolution that's been provided. And then you can just say, you can say whatever you want. We can have copies of this. I can make copies of this if you want to look at it, but it's whatever y'all want to do. And you could include this reference to the community and all that, or you could just say you want to just approve or set aside the money. And then you could just have a discussion about it. You don't need to vote on the, or you don't have to include as part of your motion the statement about the ODC being involved in structure. You don't include.
If you wanted to, but you don't have.
So we could just approve the money.
Clarification here, where exactly are we going to vote, be voting on?
What, what, the whole thing item that has been brought to us now is the fact of setting aside the possibility of five million dollars to be used for whatever housing.
Right.
But there was also part about forming a coalition. And my feeling is it's that we need to have that group focus on the administration of those funds that are there and not the.
I got you. You're speaking about the ODC, correct?
Yes, development of.
You can just make that motion.
Don't know the how or whatever.
Right, I mean, that needs to be, that means a community effort. That needs to be the old donkey in the.
And his friend.
You don't have to say that again, okay?
So what wording are you taking on that?
Apparently it's Ethan Grant Lee in Texas.
You could just say in your motion, I just want to make a motion that the council adopt a resolution setting aside the five million.
Period in store. That's our, that's my feeling.
And then I'll create that motion the way you want it, and get the mayor to sign it.
Can we make sure we clarify that with the citizens who are more than likely going to be here about this, so they can understand?
Whatever, yes, whatever.
I'll bring it up.
Whatever explanation, any of the council members will have.
Okay, then appointment of boards and all that. Do we have, for downtown Odessa, do we have?
John Harris, yes, for one.
I'm all that, right? I keep asking.
Do we on that?
Am I on that?
No, I'm confused. I think all three of y'all are on it.
Because we weren't sure who was.
Peggy and Malcolm. We said that so fast.
Am I on?
I felt Michael had. That's what I wanted to get.
We need to review that or let me know what.
For my fifty, go back and give the minutes, just to make sure we have.
Well, my minutes.
Listen to what he says.
We said, we said, we said exactly what happened here is Dewey and I said, we're both already on it. Dewey said, but I don't mind not being on it if somebody else wants to be. And you said, I do.
Sometimes my mouth gets the best of my brain.
It's my, it's, what you said is my, you know, that counts by district.
Okay, I did say that. You're right, you're right. Well, actually, I would like to nominate John Harris.
Okay, he's going to be on for yours.
But he's going to, you're representing.
We have a vacant council member we have to sit.
Then I'll go ahead and sit on this vacant council member then.
So it's going to be, I just want to put two on.
Or can we do that?
No, you're nominating John, but then two council members on top of that, and that's you and me on top of this.
Okay.
But you still get to nominate John.
So Dewey's officially on.
Okay.
Dewey's.
Hey, all I did was ask.
So it's nine?
Seven.
Norma, can you go ahead and put that for the two council members?
Yes.
And John.
And if these keep showing up on here, what does that signify? That these people have?
Yes, council, the council members have not appointed their appointees to the board. So if you don't see yours, that means you're already taken care of. And I believe Mayor is ready to do hers, so she's going to do.
I've got one more, Mayor. It's not on here, but I was on the House of Finance Corporation and then Vanessa Schroner and Heather Dahl. I think that would be great for that provision.
Which?
Oh, which is.
Okay, I'll put it on the next one since it's not on here.
Okay, then Mara?
These who are here already, I've talked to them and they want to continue serving. The ones that are stated on here, Jesus and Steve DeCiro.
One thing I want to bring up also, and Norma's done a great job, we have about three more applications, I think, that are coming in from the professional group. And so I think they'll probably be in the next week or so. I encourage them to get them in. So they'll be coming, and they are really eager to help. And I think it'd be great to utilize them where possible.
I've got something I need to point. Okay, anything else? All right, then we have citizens' comments, and we adjourn. So that handles that. Item three, Public Art Master Plan. Mr. Randy Hamm has ten minutes.
I've got ten minutes? I don't know if I can combine my brilliance in ten minutes. I will do my best. Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Randy Hamm. I'm the executive director for Odessa Arts. And I am here to talk about the Public Art Master Plan. But as this is my first time to address the new council, I thought I'd give you a little, start with a little overview of what Odessa Arts is and what we do for the community. Odessa Arts is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that serves as the local arts agency for Odessa and Ector County. We are primarily funded through hotel occupancy tax, so we will see you at outside agency funding. But we take a lot of that money in our primary mission, as we were founded forty years ago, is to give out cultural tourism grants to organizations that have a, have an artistic merit and provide a direct impact to the hotel industry in Odessa. We were very lucky last year to have Scott Jozlov from the Texas Hotel Lodging Association and Ann Graham from Texans for the Arts to come down and do a hotel occupancy tax workshop. They are scheduled to come back again this year. I'm very excited about that. I learned a lot. So I just wanted to give you a little overview. Maybe, there it is. These are just a few of the organizations that we support through cultural tourism grants. This calendar year, 2019, we are on target to give out $200,000 in cultural tourism grants to thirteen agencies. Permian Basin Opera, the Artisan Art Walk, which is very new, Middleland Festival Ballet, Hispanic Art Association. But when you ask people what they think of the arts, these are some of the answers that were given to Americans for the Arts in 2016 of a survey of 30,000 people. Sixty-three percent believe that the arts lift me up beyond everyday experiences. Seventy-three percent say the arts are a positive experience in a troubled world, and sixty-four percent feel pure pleasure to experience and participate in the arts. How many times have we heard there is nothing to do in Odessa? And how many times have we heard that it's ugly here? I used to get really angry about that, I mean, to the point where I couldn't sleep. But what I found is that it's a great teaching moment, and I can, we have a big influx of people moving in here. And if you've moved into the community and the first person you go to and you say, what is there to do in my community? The first person says nothing, that's what you're going to believe, and you're never going to go out there and look for it. So every time I go and I talk to people, I deputize them and say, it's your job as a citizen to correct them and say, no, there's actually. This is a sampling of the arts events just for the month of April. You can see music, visual art, theater, literary, performance art, museum exhibits, and that's just one month. You can also find all of this on the Our Odessa app, free on the iTunes store. In 2018, Odessa was very lucky to be one of only seventy-two communities in the United States to receive a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts for an NEA Big Read. And we decided to use that as a jumping off point for what we called a cultural tour of Odessa. In twelve weeks, we had thirty events around the city, and we had a cultural passport, and you could take that passport and you could stamp it. And after you did five stamps, you would get swag, and after ten stamps, better swag. What we found out was over those twelve weeks, 2,700 people attended at least two events. Of that 2,700, a quarter of them made use of hotels here in Odessa. For twelve weeks, that's amazing. And I love the fact that we got all our cultural entities to work together. We want to do it again. We've got some ideas for 2021. But this is a really great way to go to the hotels and give them passports to give to their guests, and that will show them that there are things to do here. Students who are involved in arts school are more likely to attend classes, score higher tests, and go on to earn a college degree. Say what you want about the state of the ECIS education, and we know that they're rebuilding a lot of things, but we have one of the finest fine arts programs in the state of Texas. We always have, and I applaud ECISD for always investing in the arts. Odessa is one of only the few communities in the state of Texas where a child can start playing harp in fifth grade and graduate with a degree in harp performance from UTPB and never have to buy a harp. And so I always talk about that because there are very few schools that can do that, and we can. Pots and Prints, Chris Stanley and Mario Karen from UTPB found that there were so many schools in the outlying West Texas area that didn't have an art program anymore, that they bought a trailer and they loaded up every Friday, and it's got clay and it's got printmaking materials, and they drive all over West Texas, and they do an entire day of art for students in schools that don't have an art program. This program is so successful that the National Endowment for the Arts calls it one of the most successful rural art programs in the United States, and the Washington Post has profiled them, right here in Odessa. There are 130 now, we're going to go with 130, traffic boxes in Odessa.
I love those. I just think those are so fun.
It is one of my favorite programs for several reasons. Number one, it's very cost-effective. It costs us about $2,500 to do one traffic box. No matter where you work, where you go to school, there's a traffic box near you. I call it our equitable distribution of art. It's for everybody. It's the most public of the public art that we have. And when we get all of them done, if, how we'll quit building traffic signals, we'll have an outdoor gallery. And by the time we get to box 130, it'll be time to cover box one again, so it will be ever-changing. The, we have four boxes we're about to cover on 52nd and Tanglewood, 52nd and JBS, and then in the East and West Mall parking lot. All three finalists are artists from Odessa. I love the fact that we are now elevating our Odessa artists to be exhibited alongside artists from all over the United States.
Let me say one thing on that, because we're one I'm never getting. The process is wonderful. I mean, Randy and the group did a great job, and the process is very transparent and very effective.
Thank you very much. I, you know, we talk about art as a fun thing, and it enhances our lives, but the people that are artists, whether they're musicians or visual artists or theater, they have skills, they have a skill set. And so we treat these public art commissions as a job application. You have to send in a resume, you have to send in images of previous work, you have to send in an artist statement, the whole thing. And we vet those, and we narrow it down to three finalists. For those four traffic boxes, we had 70 applicants from all over the United States for those four boxes. And then, of course, we have the Spire. I'm very, very excited because work is to begin imminently. We are on target for being done by the end of this year. And I noticed when I came in that you had the Texas Tech piece as your desktop, and that's awesome. Between this and the conference centerpiece, the energy tree and Texas Tech, we're really going to be talking about public art in a very different way. There it is, your picture's much better.
Randy, when is that going to, when are they going to get started on that, that piece?
The Spire?
Yes, sir.
So I just talked to Dyson and Womack earlier today. They're our project managers. They were talking to the city this week about permitting. They're finishing up the bid process right now. We're hoping that everything will be in line to start in May. The artist, Ray King, is already about a quarter of the way through fabricating the art piece itself, and he'll be ready by September. The art piece will be ready to install by September. And really, what we're talking about now is the remediation of the tower itself. But we really do think between May and December, we'll have this finished.
Is it possible we could have some type of recorded timeline? I think that would be so neat, where you see the little people.
I've actually talked to Odessa College about doing a stop motion.
I think that would be so neat to see that.
Yeah, I really want to see that. Because right now, the conventional wisdom is that that's going to be tented for the lead abatement. There's going to be this big tent over it for a while, which I really love because that's really going to generate some interest, and people are going to be really, really excited about that.
I got you.
I will tell you, after, after the Ofs Generous donation, we were also awarded a matching grant from the FMH Foundation, and then we also got private donations, some anonymous, everything from $20 all the way to $25,000 to $50,000 because people wanted to be a part of this. So the community is really invested in that, which is what is really driving us to get it finished. We've been talking about it for a long time, and I got, I got, I'll be pretty honest, I got really dejected for a while because it felt like there was nothing going on, and we were just talking about it. And then I remembered how long it took that conference in there to get the break ground, and thought, okay, we're good, we're good. And then, of course, you've seen the community gallery in there. We're almost at a year for this. It'll be up in August, and we'll put up a new display, which is fantastic. And of course, you have the responsibility of choosing one piece of art that you'll add to the city's permanent collection. I think this is a fantastic way of building a permanent collection of art for the city. And I really want to thank Mr. Marrero for, for working with me on this. And we had the, it was crazy, we had the idea at the same time, and it's a great.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You got off the chart.
I'm sure we can do it.
I'll get something on the law soon.
When we expect our community, they will rise to meet the challenge. When we give them this public art and when we, we give them the events that they can go to, they begin to feel pride in our community, and it's so, so very.
Dance surprise.
I was hearing that. And art can be a very big part of that. I mean, it really can. You can't say that it's an ugly community if you have traffic boxes covered everywhere, if you have, you know, very tall public art, if you have a symphony and you have a community theater, and you have all of these things. I'm a big Star Wars fan, by the way, and I keep this, I saw this, and it made me think of Odessa, so it's framed and on my desk. But you know, when people think of Mos Eisley, they think of A Hive of Scum and Villainy. But there's also a great Light Opera Society, a semi-annual interfaith flea market, and Tatooine's biggest fiberglass Bantha, so back off. And that's what I think of Odessa. You know, people, these are the things that we say about ourselves, and when we say them about ourselves, we believe that. So it's up to us to change that mind and to go out there and say, no, there are things to do, no, we live in a beautiful community. All of that was an introduction just to be able to give you your public art master plan. But I did want to also share a couple of other things that I think you're going to be very pleased with. We started just last week. We partnered with Americans for the Arts to do an economic impact of the arts study for Odessa. It's a year-long, 12-month study. We have to take 800 audience intercept surveys over the next 12 months, and I thought that was very daunting, and I was very nervous about that. In the first weekend, we did it, we had over 100 in one weekend. So I have copies of that, I want you to be able to look at. They're also going to look at the nonprofits and look at the places that employ artists and how that money goes back into the local economy. So if the Permian Playhouse is doing a show and they go to Sherwin-Williams and buy paint, how much of that money is going back into the local economy? So we could talk about it besides just the feel goods, and we have some of that hard data, because that's going to be able to attract our businesses who come here and say, I don't have anything to bring my wife and kids to. Well, you're wrong. That's a copy of the Audience Intercept Survey. And then I also wanted to leave you with this, which is the new memorandum of understanding between the Texas Hotel Lodging Association and Texans for the Arts, specifically on local hotel tax fundings of the arts by Texas cities. And this is a guideline that we give to all of our arts agencies about how to best use that hotel money and to make an impact on the hotel industry in Odessa. Because of course, it's all about cultural tourism, but the side effect to that is that it benefits all of us that live here as well. Because our cultural partners may be going to the symphony, but it's there for everyone. So I think I'm done. I think I can stop talking now. I would be very happy to answer any questions you have about this. And let me put it this way, I thank you so much for being a counsel that understands the importance that the arts play in our community, and thank you for investing in it.
I don't necessarily have a question. I would just say, I encourage you to get bold and just come, bring more of this to the table. We need this, really.
We absolutely do need this.
I mean, you know, Randy, we've talked about those two spots over there by Freedom Park.
Yes.
That needs something done to them. I think we need to enforce, I know we can't put a rap on them from what we understand.
Yes.
But somehow we need to force electric company and telephone company to get something, get graffiti on them and everything else.
Well, I'll tell you why. What was surprising to me is we've only had one traffic box vandalized, and it was over there by OHS. And as soon as somebody saw it vandalized, they texted me a photo of it, and I called the Graphics Express, and they had it replaced within 24 hours. So that vandalism was gone within 24 hours, and then we haven't seen any sort of vandalism since. I think you're seeing the community take pride in those things, so I agree with you. There should be something that we could do to beautify that.
There's so much traffic. I mean, that's, I'll probably say it's the most traffic in an alley in any place in Odessa.
Yes.
Where you entry to Freedom Park, over there behind Southwest Bank.
Yeah, between the Market Street and the.
Is it the phone?
There's a, there's an AT&amp;T box, and then there's also an Encore box.
That are graffiti.
And they're just graffiti.
And I can't get permission from them to do anything.
And also, because it's technically not city property, and our, our public art plan addresses specifically a property that's owned by the city in terms of what we can do.
I say we let Malcolm handle it.
Can I just say, Randy does a great job.
He does.
I serve on the board with him, and he, his heart is here. As long as for the arts, I like the arts. Serving just these few months with him, I love the arts.
I've got a, yeah, I've got a deputy. I just need everyone in this, in this room to feel the same, but I, just like everybody else here, I love my community, you know? And when I learned, I was the guy, I was the kid that said there was nothing to do here and that it was ugly, and I was going to get out of here and never look back. And it has been the most rewarding experience to stay in this community and, and work with all of these civic leaders and make something out of this. And we just need to get the word out and get more people involved and continue to invest in the arts.
That art apocalypse, the passport, that was so fun. And it was just fun to just be able to have the passport and get it stamped. But to think that we were part of something bigger, you know, and the fact that the book also had a young person's companion book to it, I thought that was one of the coolest things. And I had seen that done twice before in bigger cities, and then you did it here. So I thought that was a great, great event.
Well, thank you so much. I really.
Great, very good.
It was, it was a lot of fun to do. You know, that was a book that I really, really loved. And I don't know if everybody in this room knows it, but a few years ago, two years ago, Odessa was named one of the top 10 literary destinations in the state of Texas, and we don't have a bookstore. I mean, seriously.
We have one downtown.
We do have one downtown. We also have a library. But to be, you know, to think that Odessa was one of the top 10 literary destinations, and you've seen the Midland Library, and we got that, you know, a lot of that has to do with our citywide reading programs and our book festival, which we're going to have another one in 2020, and some of the literary superstars that we've been able to bring to, to Odessa. I'm really proud of that.
We don't even have a Christian bookstore now either. We don't have anything.
Nothing.
Randy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the great presentation, too.
Thank you very much.
Next item forward, Text dot six, New Ralph Program. Mr. Feldman.
So back in, a couple of years ago, back in 2017, Text dot had a call for projects. We submitted a project involving a bike lane on streets using the Encore easements. It did not get selected. There is another Text dot call for projects, and Tim McDaniel from Planning has, has found it, and he has been working on it tirelessly. And, and I must say that Text dot applications are a lot like federal projects that are endless with paperwork. So Tim, you want to take it?
Yeah, so Text dot has opened up a two-tiered application system this time around. It's got essentially two different. It's got, um, essentially two different tracks that we might end up on. So the first one, okay, move it that way, um, is Safe Routs to Schools. So they did find, uh, about ten million dollars in, uh, Safe Routs to Schools funds that can be distributed to cities. Different projects, uh, within two miles of a K-38 school, um, are eligible for that funding. Uh, and the best part about that one is there's no matching funds required for the city. So if we do receive a grant for Safe Routs to Schools, we don't have to actually match any of those funds. Let's see here, and then, uh, the Transportation Alternatives Program is their other track. Uh, if we do get selected for that one, twenty percent matching funds are required if we're selected. But this one is more for like economic projects that are, again, pedestrian and bicycle-based. So, and then this would be our timeline. So right now, we're here, we apply, no matter what, we're going for with the same application. And then after it's due at the end of the week, they're going to let us know by June whether we're going Safe Routs to Schools or we're going, um, the, the TAF route, the Transportation Alternative Project. So, um, we're looking at doing, uh, four different applications. First one would be bike lanes from Goldrind Seventh, down Seventh Street and then up into the neighborhoods here. So it would serve as a connection to Safe Place, or Safe Place to Bike Downtown.
Okay, where does that count to Seventh Street too?
Uh, this is all red, so this is the Albertson's Street there and then it crosses Eighth there. So it avoids a very nasty intersection right here. Connects into the neighborhood here. And then, uh, so we wouldn't need any new, uh, new right-of-way new pavement, it would all be on, uh, on street. Saves a little bit of money that way. And the estimated cost that we're looking at right now, uh, held at an estimate of about five hundred thousand dollars, so a city match. Uh, this one wouldn't be eligible for the Safe Routs to Schools funds, this one's more economic. So we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars for the city match on that. Uh, the second one is a connection to UTPB and some schools in the area. So we're looking at, uh, like Gonzalez, Reagan, Bonham, I think that's a Christian school too. So just connecting those again with another bike route, uh, this one would be potentially eligible, uh, for the Safe Routs to Schools. So, uh, again, our estimate was about seven hundred thousand dollars. If we get it under Safe Routs to Schools, it'd be a zero match, um, even if it's a twenty percent match, we'd be looking at a hundred and forty thousand. Uh, we'd use the existing bike lanes along Oakwood already right here. It would, worth, it's worth noting that UTPB is actually going to be the trailhead. The MPO is working on a, um, inner-city trail for hiking and biking. This would be where we'd enter, uh, Odessa, so that'd be a good connection to that. Uh, we'd be using Encore Right-of-Way for part of that as well, but most of this would be on street as well. So not a whole lot of extra new pavement, uh, here. And then, uh, this one was at the request of Parks Retirement Village, this would just be a sidewalk. Essentially, it would help them, um, get to retail in the area, Dollar General, uh, different food options for these people who may not otherwise have a way to get down there, they may no longer have licenses, things like that. But it'd be a safe route, um, for people in this retirement village to be able to get down. Uh, so we'd be looking at sidewalk on the, uh, west side of the road.
In what road is that?
This is Padre, my bad. Sorry, my apologies. This one would not be eligible for the Safe Routs to Schools, uh, so we're looking at a four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar cost with a match of eighty-six thousand two hundred if we were to receive the grant. Uh, it also lies along the route of one of the, uh, inner-city multi-use trail routes that the MPO is looking at. Um, so again, it would tie into that, uh, network that they're looking at doing. Uh, and then the last one that we're looking at would be along Electric Street on the south side. It would put in sidewalks on both sides of the street for a bike, or a bus stop, I believe it's right here. Yeah. So it would be safer for these children to be able to walk to school because right now they have no sidewalks, uh, no ways to really get to this bus stop. Uh, it's very important. So we're hoping that this would be eligible for the Safe Routs to Schools funds. Uh, so we'd be looking at, uh, almost five hundred thousand dollars for that one. Uh, again, if it's Safe Routs to Schools, there'd be no city match. Otherwise, we'd be looking at about a hundred thousand dollars in match funds if we were to receive the other grant for that one.
Okay, so now that's on Electric. From where to where? Man, I'm not getting my bearings on that.
Yeah, I didn't.
So this is, this is Lindy. And, um.
Hudson or something like that?
Yeah.
Dixie's down that way.
Can I make recommendations here? Are you guys going to put any type of parameters to protect the pedestrians and the citizens, you know, the bike riders and things like that? Or such as speed limit, uh, clear visible speed limit signs? Because my biggest fear, my biggest fear is that a child being harmed by someone who's not paying attention or just excessive speeding, that, that is my biggest fear. I just don't want to see that.
And so the, the bike projects that have been, that Tim just talked about, would be on street. So it would be similar to what is already on Oakwood. So it would just be a bike lane next to a travel lane.
And so how wide are those bike lanes?
Bike lanes are five feet wide.
But Hal, in some of these areas, we can supplement that with, with additional bigger signs, perhaps some striking on the floor.
Certainly, and, and depending on the width of the street, we could make a bike lane a little wider. I'm, I'm hesitant to make a bike lane too wide because then it looks like a travel lane. Because then people get into it and drive it. But, and, and, and like Tim is aware, you know, they do have buffers that we could paint, uh, a buffer between the bike lane and a travel lane and like hatch it out so that there's a space between a bike lane and a travel lane. So there's different options.
How about a raised surface, like a, more or less like a speed bump?
That would get costly. That would get way costly.
That is very good design, but it is very expensive.
I always just wonder why it couldn't be painted like neon yellow or something, you know, because it's, they're painted white. You know, the bicycle and I always think, this seems to be a really bright color.
Well, and it's interesting you mention that because, uh, the designated color for bike lanes is lime green. And there are some cities that have designated the bike lane with a supplemental color. That's an option.
I mean, I think you would notice it more.
But some people like at the, at the, after an intersection will do so many feet of green to get your driver's attention and then periodically do green down the roadway to, to get the driver thinking, that's not driving lane, that's bicycle lane. So there, there, there's color options.
But I'll guarantee you, people will gripe about the colors. They'll gripe, they gripe about the color of fire hydrants and will sometimes go and paint them their own color. You know, to match their house, of course. And so, that's the problem with anything that goes outside of basic is, you've got those cavemen. Is that what they were called?
Yeah.
Cave?
Yeah.
Is there any, is there anything we could do as a council to deter, uh, drivers from, or, or encourage them to pay more attention?
If you do, I would love it. I don't, I don't know.
I'm asking you, is there anything that we could do, maybe?
Community communication type effort. I mean, I like what you're saying, somehow we gotta get on TV and on internet somehow.
You, you see drivers doing stupid things daily.
Like daily, I see individuals blowing through school zones like.
Talking on cell phones all the time.
Yeah.
Going through intersections.
Yeah.
It's, yeah. Driver behavior is hard to curb.
But, so we do have some letters of support from the, uh, the local community, UTPB, ECISD, Permian Basin Bicycle Association in downtown Odessa have all expressed support, uh, in letter form. We're also reaching out to some other community organizations. Uh, this would be part of our final package if allowed to proceed, um, you know, along with other things, so. But it already is showing to have pretty strong community support so far. Uh, so what we'd be asking you for is just, I guess, the nod to go forward with this first round. And then, um, if we do get selected to go into the second round, we would need a resolution of support from the council stating that you would want to match the funds for whatever we were checking.
Yeah, that's, that's great leverage of money, thank you. Hope we get it.
Oh, yeah, me too.
I'll, I'll point out just one thing that's related to this, uh, UTPB, we've begun to meet with UTPB. They're, they're planning a master plan for their campus and so many of their efforts overlap with us and this is just one of those. So you'll be seeing more partnership with that group as well.
Good.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Item five, uh, hotel occupancy tax. It's getting to that time of the year when y'all are going to go through your first hotel motel allocation. Uh, the way it's been in the past is you get a book, it's about the size of a budget book and it gives you all the applications from every organization seeking money. It'll tell you why they think they need it, it'll give you what they would like to have. And then you will get a list, uh, very similar to this one, typically on a Excel spreadsheet. And they will ask you to allocate the amount of money per organization. You know, and we basically, after that, we went into council, they'll come up and they'll talk about, say, you know, I want it for this reason. We give them about three minutes usually a piece. And then council would go through an individual list. So, you know, council member Hamilton would say, okay, I want to give Black Cultural Council X amount. I want to give Commemorative Air Force this amount. What I would like to talk about is a little bit, maybe changing this up a little bit. Everybody gets their book. I'm thinking, would it be easier to have you bring your amounts when you come to council that night? So they can go ahead and put it on a spreadsheet, listen to all of the people that want to speak and if you'd like to make any changes, you can make them at that time. Because what we have to do is with council, we'll have to have four members agree on that amount. So you, thirty thousand, you're thirty-one, Dewey's thirty-two, Malcolm's thirty-three. We kind of play, um, let's make a deal and we talk about, you know, would you go up or would you come down to this amount? Because we have a certain amount of money that we typically like to allocate, we like to know that upfront.
Is there, my apologies, uh, is there any way we could gauge the impact some of these? Is there any type of way we can gauge that impact?
Well, and on the, uh, application that they submit, Mr. Hamilton, uh, we ask for, number one, what's the project? Number two, what other dollars are you bringing to the table? And I think the one that's most important is what is the impact, how many people are coming to stay as a result of your event?
But how can we, is there a verification process of that?
Gary, you want to talk about what your office does in terms of, uh, when those things are submitted for reimbursement, the things that you guys check for?
Actually, I haven't done that.
Oh, you have, oh, that's right.
And usually the reimbursement's based on, the budget department looks at reimbursement. The legal department looks at the applications to make sure that they've included everything they're required to include and that they've answered all the questions. But, um, as far as verifying that information, sometimes that's pretty hard to do to verify how many, uh, hotel stays they got out of their event, so, um, you know.
They provide a number, but yeah, it is difficult to verify it.
It's like, how many come to the rodeo, well, how many hotel rooms does that mean? Well, it's kind of hard to tell because a lot of those guys come in, compete and go.
And a lot of them have living quarters in their travel and they're a horse trailer, so they're staying there, so.
But each one of these and each one of these organizations are either for-profit or nonprofit. In the past, council has said, we're only going to give money to nonprofits. Because if it's a profit, you're paying for some advertising that's going to fall to their bottom line, is what some have expressed to me. But this is just kind of give you information, let you start thinking about it. When we hand out the books, we may talk, talk a little more.
May I ask why, why we have the underlined?
Yeah, I was going to show you the, the ones that are underlined are typically the biggest ticket items. Convention and Visitors Bureau through the chamber. Uh, then they have the sporting events, um, and they have the, uh, downtown Odessa is also funded through CDB. Odessa Arts Council is, Randy just presented, that's another big ticket. Uh, University of Texas at the Permian Basin, we've been giving them two hundred million, or two hundred thousand dollars. For the football program, that was part of their, uh, when they came in. Of course, then we have fifty thousand that's, um, been a donation to the council, to the, uh, Nectar County Coliseum, which is just a, a recurring event. And then, of course, we have the administrative costs and audit fees.
May I recommend, is there any type of way we could increase that budget for, uh, Randy?
Well, that's something that we do all, when everybody has, um, books and that's part of.
That's part of the discussion.
So they'll tell us how much we have.
That's one of the things, because I know we may have to pull some money out for the conference center. But, you know, one of the things that we've talked about is, we approved that to go to the legislature, talking about the sports complex. You can allocate a certain percentage of your hotel motel funds on an annual basis to that. You know, some people say, well, with a sports complex, it's a recurring event. Instead of a one-time rodeo or one-time, um, you know, CAF event, it's something that happens every weekend. And that's something that we really have to decide as a group, you know, how we're going to allocate this money going forward. And it's something we probably need to talk about because if you're going to build a sports complex, it's going to cost a little bit more, uh, over the long term. But, and some people say, well, it's a recurring benefit, you're going to get money from those care, parents bringing their kids in every weekend. But, you know, and that's something that we're just going to need to talk about.
I have a question, a couple of comments. I agree that we probably need to talk about it after this process because if they haven't been told that there may be some changes in this process, I think that's really important because some of these smaller, you know, uh, operations.
And we may fund them this year, just like we always have.
That's what I'm saying, so if there's some changes, I would just suggest that we wait until after the process so that we can put, have everybody on board. When we first came on, you also mentioned that some of these, um, entities just do it as a line item, they don't show up, they.
We've had that in the past.
Okay, I was going to say, that's just on us, is that, is it a requirement that they show up and tell us how they're going to spend it? Or, I mean, because, I know you were not happy that it just becomes a line item.
Yeah, we had somebody that wanted fifty thousand dollars, they didn't show up. In my opinion, if you're going to ask somebody fifty thousand dollars, you need to come at least forward and say, hey.
I agree, is that a part of the packet that they need to be pregnant?
I don't know if that's a requirement, but historically, they always have.
Yeah, I know, when I was with the city, that they did show up and I was surprised that he was in.
Right, and it kind of shocked council that time when they didn't show up.
So it's not often?
Well, it's, I think it's been a couple of times in the last couple of years. But this is, you know, and it's something we need to ask ourselves is, do we want to just be a line item? Or do we want to say, okay, this year we'll give you forty thousand, next year we'll give you thirty-five or whatever?
We don't, probably, but we still need to educate.
But that's something we need to think about, I just wanted to get this on the table, let y'all think about it.
What, what we can do in the follow-up to next year is give you some examples of what other cities do. Because they do, as the mayor described, they kind of start, I mean, if an organization comes in, they kind of lean them down off of it, if you will. And, uh, to Councilman Hamilton's point, they've got more information that's required as part of the verification process. So we can certainly, uh, bring you some of those examples well before next year, somebody can make some of those decisions.
Okay.
So, what, what's the, why the tremendous drop-off from twenty seventeen eighteen in tax down to, I mean, how did we lose two and a half million dollars?
Which one thing?
Well, the, the revenues estimated twenty seventeen eighteen were six and a half million, six point six million, you know, for twenty eighteen.
That'll give you a breakdown of, um.
Why the revenues down? Mostly because we limit the budget we're showing on the revenue to curtail kind of what the allocation's going to be. Because if you go into the meeting and you say, well, we, we got seven million last year, we think we're going to get seven million again, but we're only going to allocate two point nine million, that looks kind of strange to the people asking for the allocations. So, part of this had to do with the money that was still needed for the commitment to the conference center. So we knew we were going to have to pull out two point four million that we did in seventeen eighteen. So that's one of the reasons we dropped the budget to revenue to look more in line with what you were actually allocating out.
So it's really not because we don't think.
It wasn't really based on what we think we're going to get.
Because I, I think that's important because I think, are you, are you saying that as a council, we get to determine the expenditure amount or are you guys telling us this is the expenditure?
They give us a recommendation.
We give you a recommendation and then y'all can determine how, how you allocate it within.
In the past, they bled, bled the fund balance down some. And so consciously, they said, we need to build this fund balance back up. And so they lowered that amount.
We gave a whole lot to, to the conference center. And we still have some costs there. That we have to handle. So, but you know, as, as the hotel revenue kept creeping up and up and up, we found that the entities were asking more and more and more and more and getting more dependent on what we were allocating to them. So we wanted to try to, you know, part of it was the conference center, but part of it is trying to bring them back in to not rely on high dollars coming out of the hotel motel fund. Because that limits what you can do in the future out of your hotel motel fund.
Well, and I guess that's really kind of where I'm going with is that, you know, those numbers should be significantly higher, which gives us an opportunity to do other things.
If you, if you keep your allocations consistent with what you have in the past, you have that ability to build that money up for other projects that you really want to do in the future. That's exactly how we did the conference.
Some of them came to us and maybe they got $100,000 the year before when they wanted $350,000 this year because they knew it was up. And you're just sitting there going, that's just not practical.
Just wanted it simply because it was there.
And that's, we don't want to become a line item that's automatic. I mean, yes, they need to be doing fundraising on their own, like every other organization, but if we can bring people into the community, it's good for the community.
FWT, Odessa Productions.
You'll get all that. It's, they'll give you, that book will be full of everybody that's applying for it. And it was.
It's Biesta West Texas. Oh, okay.
Expect cards and little everything.
Well, I mean, I'm kind of surprised because Cinco de Mayo is like coming up and I haven't heard anything about that.
But a lot, some of those are put on privately and it's a for-profit. And so you're sitting, and I think Biesta West Texas is for-profit.
Jackalope's is also.
But I mean, as a council, I'm gonna say, we're not gonna fund for-profits. But that's just, you know, that's a council decision.
Well, we're, we are at the time of the year where we need to send out all the applications. In fact, they're kind of waiting on any guidance from y'all. So if you want to not have.
We're not making any changes. We'll proceed as well.
Yes, or if you want to not give to any for-profits, then we need to be able to notify them of that.
I'm not prepared to say that.
So we wanna go as normal. So we'll go ahead and get the packets sent out this week.
They're not a packet. It's a book.
The application packets to the entities. One other thing that I wanted, does anyone know, not know why the Chamber of Convention and Visitors budget is so large? Do y'all understand what they do?
I would like to know.
Well, I mean, they basically run our convention and visitors department basically for the city of Odessa. They, they book convent, they do all the booking of the conventions, work with all the hotels, work with all the entities to bring stuff into the city of Odessa. So we don't, I mean, we have downtown Odessa that does some of that stuff. But historically, they've been the operations of that type of division for the city.
And they are very effective.
They do all the playoff games.
Know that that's why their budget is so large. If you didn't know that already.
And that's kind of a part of that book that we'll see some of those things that they brought in.
Right. It's kind of like with our ODC, they don't have any employees. So the Economic Development Division of the Chamber does a lot of that work for that development corporation.
Convention and Visitors used to be the city department.
It used to be years and years ago.
When I first came. Shut up. Or let me think. What would be another word? Respectfully shut up.
Boy, that was a look. Smarty.